Act, Chapter Four, Title Thirty, Code of Laws of South Carolina, nineteen seventy-six. An agenda's been posted on the front door of City Hall, and notification of this meeting's been given to the news media. Looks like we have a quorum?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
All right. What do we have up first?
First on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda.
We have a motion with regard to the minutes and information reports.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Bowles. I hear a second.
I'll second that motion.
Second by Mr. Bass. All in favor of approval of the consent agenda, please raise your hand. Motion carries by a vote of six to zero.
Mayor and council under item number one, public appearances to recognize Ms. Jacquez Flucker from Gleams Human Resources Commission regarding Community Action Month.
Ms. Flucker, you are recognized.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As noted, my name is Jacquez Flucker. I am the Assistant Program Director for our Gleams Community Services Department. And just quickly, I just want to reiterate how important it is for us to be able to receive this proclamation for Community Action Month, May twenty twenty. As you know, Gleams is a community action agency, and we are one of a thousand-plus community action agencies across the country. We're a part of the Community Action Network, and this month marks fifty-six years since we were established as a network. And we pretty much are trying to serve as a voice for the low-income people, and also to provide that support, those opportunities for the low-income individuals and families that we serve. For instance, we try to take a holistic approach to meet the needs of our customers. We look at the immediate needs, like if someone is trying to, for instance, get their utilities from being shut off, we try to help the immediate need if we can, but we also look at the long-term impact as well. For instance, we have Head Start, and we know with what students receive with Head Start, it carries forward with them for a number of years. Also, if someone wants to be more job-marketable and they need those, that training and additional education, we can try to help with that as well. It looks more like short-term solutions, if you will, but it's a lasting impact over the years, so we try to make a holistic approach if we can. And I say if we can due to COVID-19. COVID-19 has not only impacted everybody pretty much, but it's also impacted how we administer our programs, how we impact, how we provide our services. And one way how it has impacted our network is Community Action Month. Normally, every May, we have activities throughout the month to try to raise the awareness of community action and to show people how important it is for us to collaborate and partner with others in our community. And with Gleams, we normally have a Community Action Day, where we'll have our venue set up, customers will come and check out the vendors and exhibitors that are set up, and we will provide lunch, have a program, pretty much just something to show the resources that are available to them. But we couldn't do that due to social distancing, so we tried something different. Actually, last Friday, in front of the Brewer Community Complex, we had a contactless, a contactless day of action, if you will, where our customers drove through, if you will, to our setup, and we provided lunch via pizza, Chick-fil-A box, but we also provided a resource packet. So that way, even though we couldn't have like our normal shindig, if you will, we would still be able to show them what's available in the community. And also, we showed our partners some love as well, and with some of our vendors and partners, we actually delivered lunch. And I actually had the pleasure of delivering Chick-fil-A boxes here for administrative staff, so we could still show that spirit of community action. And that's why I'm here today, to really reiterate how important it is, because especially right now, we, it helps for us to have that support that, hey, yeah, we see that hard work and dedication that community action agencies across the country are doing, and we really do appreciate the consideration that is being done for these proclamations, and I just wanted to say thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Flucker. Appreciate what you and Ms. Jeter over there are doing for us, and be happy to sign this proclamation.
And could I get a picture of you?
Absolutely.
How do you want to do it? Just see me. And Jacquez, I like, Jacquez, I'd like to thank you for a great presentation and enlightening us on what we actually do at Gleams. Great job. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a board member on there, right? Still on that board?
Chairman of the Board.
Chairman. Ms. Bowles is Chairman of the Gleams Board. Under New Business, item number one is to consider ordinance twenty dash zero zero six, annexing property owned by Birch Tree Storage LLC. This is first reading, and I'll have Mr. Thomas cover this item for you.
Good evening, everyone. All right. So as you're all aware, we're looking at the annexation of property at two fourteen Birch Tree Drive, which is currently located in the county. The adjacent property at two twelve Birch Tree Drive's currently located in the city. And as you can see, there's currently a storage facility operating at two twelve Birch Tree. The motivation for annexation is the desire to put up a new sign to advertise the, the business that sits at two twelve. The plan is to, both are currently zoned general commercial. The plan would be, once it's annexed, would be to combine both pieces of property. That way, the sign could sit on the parcel for the business, on the same parcel as the business. Let's see. Here's, and there's a rendering of what they're hoping the new sign would look like compared to the old. Let's see. That sums it up. Does anybody have any questions? It's pretty straightforward, and we covered it last week.
I'll note that this is not a public hearing, and we'll have a public hearing at second reading. I know the representative of the property is here tonight, so just letting him know that at our meeting in June, if anybody knows the date, right offhand, fifteenth, June the fifteenth, there'll be a public hearing on this item.
We have a motion with regards to proposed ordinance number twenty dash zero zero six.
Will this be Ward four? Do you know?
I can look it up for you real quick, but I don't know right offhand. Do you know where it's located? Did they write where? Santa Fe?
Right. I think it is. I was just making sure.
I'll double-check for you.
Oh, what's the question?
I was asking if it was Ward four.
Oh, okay.
I think it is, because I think Walgreens and that whole area is. It's irrelevant.
Well, I'll check anyway, just for your education in mind.
That is so chopped up in that area with Stiefel's Appliances and that whole area, it kind of, um...
This went before the planning and commission, right? Playing the word?
What's your question? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I forgot I had this thing on. I said this went before the planning and commission, right?
No, ma'am.
It did not?
No, ma'am.
It just goes straight to us?
That's correct. And it's, it is, um, there's, so the similar zoning, so it's zone C-one in the county, which is basically general commercial in the city, so it will be annexed as general commercial. And Phil can correct me, because I haven't had tons of annexations, but I believe if there's, if there's a little bit of a, of a dichotomy in what, what it needs to be brought into the city at versus what is zoned out in the county, then it's better to take it through planning commission first. But in this case, the zoning is compatible, so we can just annex it and assign the zoning at the same time.
Yeah.
Okay. Stephanie got it Ward four. I was almost there.
Need a motion for approval?
Looking for a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Ms. Bowles, second by Ms. Hutto. Any further discussion with regards to proposed ordinance number twenty dash zero zero six? All in favor of proposed ordinance number twenty dash zero zero six? All opposed? Motion carries by a vote of six to zero.
Under New Business, item number two is to consider ordinance twenty dash zero zero seven, amending the City of Greenwood's official zoning map by rezoning approximately two-point-five acres of land located at bypass two twenty-five south from R-one Low Density Residential to Office Professional. This is first reading, and Mr. Lindler will come up and answer any questions that you all have. And just as a reminder, we will not have public hearing on first reading, we will have that on second reading, so that will be at the June fifteenth meeting. Mr. Miller wasn't able to make it this evening. He had a conflict.
Mr. Miller, you are recognized.
Glad to answer any questions that you had. The city manager provided a pretty good overview of the information, but I'd be glad to do that if you'd like me to.
So you just here for backup?
That's right.
All right. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Lindler?
I will say that this property is in Ward five.
Well, I'm not sure how many other ones on here you may need to opine on, Mr. Lindler, but with regard, do I hear a motion with regard to proposed ordinance number twenty dash zero zero seven?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Hutto.
Second.
Second by Ms. Bowles. Any further discussion regarding proposed ordinance number twenty dash zero zero seven? All in favor of ordinance number twenty dash zero zero seven? All opposed? Motion carries by a vote of six to zero.
New Business, item number three is to consider ordinance twenty dash zero zero eight, amending the City of Greenwood's official zoning map by rezoning approximately zero-point-three-seven acres of land located at four twenty-eight Gray Street from R-four Medium Residential, Medium Density Residential to OP Office Professional. Again, this is first reading. This property is located in Ward three.
Small, a little piece of property.
It is.
This is the Amick property that we rezoned last year?
Yes, sir. This, um, this is the property that's located at the corner of, um, it's owned by Marilyn and Mark Amick, and it's located at the corner of Grace and Durst, and it is the property that we rezoned, I believe it was last year.
It was.
Mr. Lindler, anything you have to add for this matter?
The only thing is, uh, it has gone back and forth between the zonings based on potential buyers for this property. With the zoning change to Office Professional, it basically allows them to do both the office and small-scale commercial activities as well as single-family residential. So there are some issues in the future as far as potential uses for the site, and this would give them a little bit more flexibility on what they have to do.
This is attached, this is attached, this is attached to the previous one, right? The one, it's another piece, it's a separate piece of property?
It's a separate piece of property.
I was trying to figure out what point thirty-seven, um, that's in red?
Yes, ma'am.
Larger than I thought.
This decision sounds a lot...
Yeah, okay. Motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Ms. Bowles, second by Ms. Hutto. Any further discussion regarding proposed ordinance number twenty dash zero zero eight? All in favor of proposed ordinance number twenty dash zero zero eight? All opposed? That motion carries by a vote of six to zero.
New Business, item number four is to consider ordinance twenty dash zero zero nine, amending the City of Greenwood's official zoning map by rezoning approximately nineteen-point-seven-nine acres located on Emerald Farm, Farm Road from R-three Medium Density Residential to R-one Low Density Residential. This property is located in Ward two.
What's the ordinance number again?
Zero zero nine.
Okay.
Mr. Lindler, anything to add on that one?
The property owner is just requesting a reduction in the density for the sign.
And remind me why that is?
Uh...
I just, I can't recall.
Uh, the request on the application states to be in keeping with the low density of the general area and to discourage further medium-to-high-density housing development in the local neighborhood.
You remember it had a lot to do with the impact that, that another, um, in that general area, there was a development that was created, and they were, this person is probably, this was our guess, this was my guess, was this person was just protecting the future land use around his property.
And if you, Ryan, if you'll go back to this slide that shows the surrounding, like adjacent pri, uses, I mean, you'll see to the north and the east is wooded lots, and that south view there is the proposed subdivision that Mr. Bass mentioned.
Anybody have any further questions for Mr. Lindler? And I'm assuming the planning, that all recommendations are for approval? Am I right?
That's correct.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Hutto.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bass. Any further discussion regarding proposed ordinance? Give me a second. Number twenty dash zero zero nine? All in favor of ordinance number twenty dash zero zero nine? All opposed? Motion carries by a vote of six to zero.
Under New Business, item number five is to consider to authorize the city manager to sign a marketing right and option agreement with Greenwood Partnership Alliance for the former Kits and Mill site. And if you'll recall our previous discussion at work session, we talked about placing the Kits and Mill property up for sale, and as the staff began to kind of develop our marketing thoughts on this property, the Greenwood Partnership Alliance, you know, came to us and said, you know, we can help you with this property, which, as we talked about in the work session, they had already really been actively helping us market this site. And so this is really a formality to get the proper paperwork in place for them to place it on state websites as a property and help the city move that property forward. James Bateman with the Property Partnership Alliance is here. If you all have any questions for him, James, if you want to come up.
I could answer any questions. The one question that I did have was that as part of the agreement, it had in there what the price that the partnership would pay per acre, which was, I think, roughly around fifty-one thousand dollars. Can you or Julie explain to me how that number was come about?
Sure. That price was set by city council, and it may have been before you came on council. So that's based on the acreage and the price that city council set.
Okay. That's just dividing the three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar sale price by the...
Six-point-seven-six.
And really, my question was, was how did we come to that comp value of per acreage? And, and, but I agree with it. I just wanted to know.
We had the property appraised, and council decided on that price. That's a good, that's a good question. I didn't realize you weren't on council when that happened.
So basically, you're marketing it at that price, you're not? Yeah.
Correct. Yes, and I think that's a good clarification, Councilman Hutto, is that we're, this agreement gives us the proper paperwork to market it for sale at the price that city council had previously decided on in this agreement, just racing into per-acre price. But there's no, although the agreement states the partnership is the option to purchase it, but there is no true intent for the partnership to purchase the property, rather to market it, and to have a transferable right in that agreement so that we could transfer it to a potential buyer, and then proceed to closing transaction on the property.
So basically, you'd act almost like a relocation company in the sense that it would be transfer, it wouldn't, basically, you would do a double, double transfer in a sense?
We could...
Yeah, I mean, so basically, you buy it from the city, but you're basically buying it in order to sell it. In, in essence, you're not really buying it, the end user is buying it.
That's right. There would be an end user purchasing the property, and I think that's good for the record, that the partnership, by executing this agreement, the city is not intending to buy the property even at the conclusion of the five-year agreement. I think it gives that second option in the agreement, but the intent is for an end user, for the partnership to work alongside the city to recruit an end user that would ultimately be the purchaser of the site. This agreement would be, it was a transferable right to assign the exclusive option to a, to a buyer that we...
So essentially, the partnership isn't necessarily really interested in owning it themselves, but there is that option. Obviously, the deal is for, for marketing more than anything. Am I, am I right?
It's for marketing and negotiating.
Right.
I mean, it's, it's an op, it's like an option to purchase, and they're selling their option to the end user.
Gives us a more, I guess, better footing for marketing the property and to be, for potential buyers to be confident that we have the authority to represent the property, is that we hold the option. Because there, for any outside of our community, there could be skepticism from some as to, who is the partnership, do they have the authority to market the City of Greenwood's property? And that's what... It does show you have skin in the game. I mean, that's, that's what I, that's when I read it, that's what I felt.
I think it provides an assurance, too, when they're negotiating on our behalf, that the city's not going to jerk the rug out from under that potential investor or buyer, too, so...
That's sure, that's really what they want, is assurance of the price, and this gives them written documentation of, of that price, so the price doesn't change on them.
Does anybody have any other questions for Mr. Bateman?
Thank you.
Thank you for the questions and the clarification.
Well, I don't know if it's clarification. I mean, I got the, I got the feeling upon taking a look at it that you were basically acting somewhat like a for-sale by, in that way, it's almost like you're acting as a for-sale by owner, because you're representing, sort of representing the owner, because you're buy, you're buying it in a sense.
It's a bit like Keller Lawrence would buy your house if he can't sell it, but...
Not quite.
But... Making those promises.
Close, but...
Because, no, then, then, then the partnership would be establishing the price, not city council, so it's not quite the same way.
Yes, it does give us the, the right to, to represent the property and to, and to market the property.
It's just an agreement.
Yeah.
No money.
That's right. No, there's no, no money in it for the partnership to market it or at the time of a sale.
And has Trip reviewed this?
Many times.
It was, the document was prepared by Nixon Pruitt, and every time we execute an, or go to execute an agreement, of course, other party has their attorney review and tweak it for a particular property. Our agreement, the partnership's agreement was drawn up specifically for industrial sites, so there were some tweaks that needed to be made. This, this agreement pertaining to the Kits and Mill site, since industrial is not the primary target for, for the property, though it could be a potential use within an overall development.
Anybody have any further questions for Mr. Bateman? Thank you, James. Appreciate it.
Thank you again for the consideration.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion regarding authorizing the city manager to sign a marketing right and option agreement with Greenwood Partnership Alliance for the former Kits and Mill site? All in favor of authorization of the city manager to sign a marketing right and option agreement with Greenwood Partnership Alliance for the former Kits and Mill site? Any opposed? And just for the record, that was a motion by Ms. Hutto, second by Ms. Bowles?
That's correct.
Okay. Just for the record. And that vote, that motion carries by a vote of six to zero.
The final item under New Business is to consider the Greenwood County Transportation Committee paving list of streets for twenty twenty. I did include the list in your packet, nothing has changed since the work session, so I'll answer any questions that you all have in particular about the list since the work session. I will note that the CTC met last week, and we did present this list to them, they will review it, and they will allocate money at their June meeting. So we know that probably collections are going to be a little bit lower, so their allocation might be lower than they have in past years, just because traveling and less gas tax is being paid, and so I think I mentioned before, we may not get all these roads, but we want to make sure that we present a lengthy and comprehensive list, so that if we... sure that we present a lengthy and comprehensive list so that if we, if we're able to, we can continue to move down the list.
I, I thought I read and that they were able, they were going to be able to include additional roads. Um, but I, I'm sorry, but I, I may have, um, may have not remembered that article that I read correctly.
When you say "they"...
Uh, um...
CTC.
CTC. Um, at the meeting last week, I'll go back and read that article, but it, it, this, this list that, that you have provided, everything, we are hoping that everything that's on this list that you've, both of these pages will be able to be taken care of this next year?
I, I say that I hope that, yes, sir, but the likelihood of that would be slim. I will tell you that we presented a very similar list, um, to CTC for 2019 and did not think we would get all the roads and we did, uh, because our bid came in favorable. Uh, and that could happen in 2020, but you just don't know until the bid comes in. So, like, I, I think I explained a little bit at the last meeting, it's a bit of a process. You present your list, then they, CTC will allocate money to you. So they may say, "Here's $350,000." Then you place your roads out for bid and then based on what your bid is, that's how many roads you can get done within the allocation. So we put forward the list that we hope we can get done and that we do as much as we can with the funding that we're provided within our bid.
I guess that's my question. I, I was at the CTC meeting last week when we gave them that list, so if we've already given them the list, what do we, is this just procedural?
It is. We, we can, we can amend our list, yes.
Okay.
But if, if you want to amend it. Um, in the past, what we've tried to do, Mr. Mayor, is to try to, to capture a little bit of everyone's ward, but last year, if you recall, we went, I had the Polite Works Department go through, ride all the city on streets and grade them. So I think that gives us a little bit more of a logical approach to how we deal with city streets. So these are all, we got all our six, six, a six road being the worst, a five being the next worst, four, three, two, one being the best. Um, we got all our sixes and fives in the 2019 contract, so all of these roads are grade fours. And I just based it on, um, ward in terms of, um, who didn't, who got the least amount of love in the 2019 list.
I read somewhere the other day, an article said that...
You're at the top.
...the city could have gotten a whole lot more roads last year. We didn't spend all the money that was allocated to us.
We haven't, we haven't spent any of that money yet because our bid just came in, so we haven't started that yet. We are getting a lot of roads this year. We're getting every road on the list that was presented to council in 2019 plus an extra road. The only money we're giving back is just like $5,000. It's just a little bit of money. Our allocation was $435,000. We got...
I think, I think the county is the one who was saying that.
The county got...
The X Journal, I'm, I'm pretty sure.
Well, I didn't read Mr. Hicks' article, so perhaps I should go back and read it. However, we, if we get down to, it, it's very possible, Mr. Abels, that we could have a change order on something, use that $5,000, but right now, our contract is for, you know, $429,000 and some change. And so that's giving, giving back $5,000. Um, but if we were to have a change order, we could, we could go before the CTC and say, "We need more money" and they may or may not give it to us. So we try not to give money back, but we understand that in good faith, when we don't have a good way to use it all up, we give it back. They remember that when we go back and ask for money in subsequent years. But in the grand scheme of things, we were awarded $435,000 and we're only giving five back.
We want all we can get.
I know, I agree.
Condition our roads, we need it.
Well, we, we, well, I mean, this is a lot of roads and I think if you guys look back at the 2019 list, and I think I provided you a copy in your packet last time, um, that was a lot of roads as well. And we, and we picked up an extra road even, so... I, I would say we did very well.
So just for the record, we can amend it, but basically, we have between now and June 13th or whenever the CTC meets, if we were to amend it, am I just saying procedurally?
If, if city council wanted to amend this list, you could tell me and make that vote and then we would go back to the CTC and say, "Our council is, would like to amend the list."
I, I guess, though, this is the exact list that we gave to the CTC.
That's correct.
Okay, that's all I want, yeah.
And it was noted at the meeting, so I'll note it for all of you because the mayor was there, but no one else was there, that, um, we have a systematic approach to how to deal with the roads. I think everybody wants to walk outside and know if their road is on the list like bunch, that, you know, you're going to walk outside and there's going to be brand-new asphalt on that road. But, um, our approach, and even the city-county engineer said it was a good approach, is to fix the base problems and then a year or two later, go back and put an overlay on top of it. So you may, your road may be on the list, it might get deep patched or cracks sealed in, and then a year or two later, you would see the new asphalt going down. And that process has been working well for us. Our roads are holding up well, the ones we've done that way. And so, um, we're trying to stay in that vein.
Do I hear a motion with regard to the list of streets?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion to approve.
I want, for the record, none, no streets in my neighborhood are on this list. I just want everyone in this.
Are you sure?
I'm very sure.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Three. What, was there a...
There was a first.
A motion.
Motion by Mr. Bass, second by Ms. Hutto, any further discussion regarding the list of streets, uh, for the Greenwood County Transportation Committee? All in favor of approval of the Greenwood County Transportation Committee paving list of city streets for 2020? Any opposed?
Are you in favor, Ms. Bowles?
I guess.
Oh, we...
But it can be amended as we, we have...
Let's re-vote.
I had you as a no. Do you want me to...
I think she was a yes.
I guess, yes.
Okay, so...
Well, I'll tell you what, for the record, let's, all in favor of the proposed list of streets for the city streets for the Greenwood County Transportation Committee? All opposed? That vote carries by, that, that motion carries by a vote of six to zero.
Under city manager comments, I will make note that, um, we will have the audit presentation at the June 1st work session. So we'll have a special call and meeting for you all to receive that information and accept the audit. Um, otherwise, I provided you a couple of updates. Um, I know I've gotten a lot of calls about roadside collection. I feel like at this point, everybody knows we're pretty far behind. A lot of people are staying home, a lot of people are doing yard work, cleaning out their houses, putting any and everything by the side of the road. We did have, uh, I believe, four people were Saturday running loaders and, um, scowl bodies to catch up. We are in Zone 13 and hopefully, we can move quickly through that area. It's taken probably eight to eight and a half weeks to get through the whole city. And prior to this, we were on about a two-week rotation, so...
Well, I've seen them on the weekends. I know they're, they're working hard.
And we've had some major tree stuff happen. And then there's been some wind and tree toppling and trees across roads and so there, so that has added to, um, the load.
On the bright side, people are cleaning up their yards.
They are.
Yeah, they are.
Doing a great job. It looks good.
Do you know, we got a problem on West Crest...
West Crestville?
Yeah, going back, that would go out spring too.
West Crestville at spring?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, that section?
Right above me.
Just the whole section?
Yeah, because they're, they're putting mattresses, sofas, tree limbs, TVs, all of it, yeah.
Yeah, and, um, I, I do a good bit of just riding around because I like to get ahead of it before you guys call me if possible. Um, it happens everywhere, everywhere. It's very frustrating.
One question, there's a, um...
Can you lean up just a little bit?
You can't hear me?
No, ma'am.
Okay, one question. Um, Stephanie, you placed on the calendar that the audit committee meeting would be at 4:30 on the 27th. In your memo, you said the 28th. Which is it?
I probably got it wrong.
It's the 27th.
On Wednesday, 4:30.
Originally, they wanted the 28th, but my son is graduating that day.
Oh, congratulations.
Thank you.
Remember, I didn't get it wrong.
You know you didn't get it, so I just wanted to clarify because I wanted to put it on my, I want, I just need to clarify. Thank you.
Does any of y'all have any other questions?
I, I just have one question really for both of you. Is the local government fund, there's obviously been some changes, um, and for this upcoming year?
The, uh, the current allocations, they just came out through the municipal association. Um, and I was looking at them at the start of the meeting. And what they did was the, um, resolution that they passed last week was to keep spending at its current level. So we would not get, at this time, we would not get the increase that we were due to get. However, when we prepare the budget, we never know what that allocation is going to be, so I always budget based on the prior year.
Right.
So as far as our budget is concerned, we're fine. Um, but hopefully, they will go back into session and vote to give us the appropriate amount.
And that's based on population, right?
It's based on population and state revenue growth.
Okay.
And, uh, it's a maximum of 5% and we were due to get a 5% increase.
Which was about $30,000, right?
Um, I'm not sure if it's quite that much.
$28,000, something like that.
And that's, and that's split because the, the state year is on June 30 and we're December, so we only actually get half of that in a, in a fiscal year. So we would only have gotten 14, 15. But I, I feel like they'll go back and do, I mean, they have the money, but, you know, this isn't the first time they, um, dipped into the local government fund either, so...
Right. We just had a lot of discussion about it in our, in our, in our planning meeting last year and it's just something that's been on my mind, especially since they're going to cut back on it, so...
Any other questions? Any comments from council?
I'd just like to say, um, from the, from the, um, Ward 3 community, um, I'd like to thank the police department and Chief, and, um, Chief Brooks for, um, the patrolling and the attention that's been shown to, there's been quite a few shootings and the people in the community have been very, uh, appreciative for being able to see, uh, officers ride through the neighborhood from, more so than they used to. I just want to thank you, uh, for the attention that, because I've, I've received calls saying, uh, "Thank you" and I just want to let you know how much we appreciate that and what a great job they've been doing. There, it, it, naturally, you can't be at all places all the time, but they just appreciate being able to see an officer drive through in, in the communities. And we just, I just want to thank you because they, they ask that I give you, I give you a call and say thank you to the officers.
Thank you, Ms. Bowles. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bass, second by Ms. Bowles, all in favor? Motion carries by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you.